Now you're gonna want to pause it.
September eleven. Saturday, Timbrow Council meeting the order and as you could heard this meeting is being recorded. Okay, normally you know I would immediately have us rise for the invocation, but given the September eleventh twenty second anniversary of the towers falling, I'd like to read a short statement. And then I have a special guest to actually give us the invocation tonight. So Sandra Dahl, she was the wife of Flight ninety-three pilot Jason Dahl in Shanksville, Pennsylvania. And in two thousand and two, the first year anniversary, she said, we continue to remember the valor of those we lost. Those who innocently went to work that day and the brave souls who went in after them. If we learn nothing else from this tragedy, we learn that life is short and there is no time for hatred. For over fifty years now, I think it might be about fifty-two or a little bit more, the United States Armed Forces have been all volunteer force. And they've joined those dangerous professions such as police, fire, emergency service personnel and emergency responders, and we have many of you in the room. These type of people, we call them heroes, but I believe we don't call them heroes. It's not because of what they've done, it's because they know that their service may ultimately put them in dangerous situations in which they may very well lose everything. This is true for all the young men and women who answered the nation's call for service in the years after nine eleven. Primarily, as we know, in Afghanistan and Iraq. I'm proud to have served as part of the Marine Regimental Combat Team Five in Fallujah in two thousand five over two thousand six. And I think about it a lot, it's very personal for me because I had twelve Marines in my, in my unit who didn't survive. So I also asked tonight if you would have a special prayer for their families and friends as well. While we mourn for those that have fallen, we should also be ever mindful and respectful of those who grieve for them and the light that still lives in their hearts. So tonight I've asked Pastor Scott Nice from the Reformed Church of Christ in Telford to come. And he also serves as a chaplain of the American Legion. So after the invocation, don't be surprised he hasn't slipped out because he has a meeting tonight, but Scott, thank you for coming, please, please rise for the prayer.
Mr. Mayor, honorable men and women of the Southern Borough Council. I bring you greetings from the commander of Warren Rory Post two thirty-four in Satterton, as well as all of her officers and membership. The Lord bless you. On the morning of September eleventh, two thousand and one, two thousand nine hundred and seventy-six people lost their lives in New York at the Pentagon on Flight ninety-three. That day started a chain of events that have left many more dead, wounded in body and soul, with the total cost of human suffering known only to our God. Tonight, as we begin this Borough Council meeting, let us pause to remember that evil does exist in this world, that the horror of that day is forever etched on the conscience of our society. And let us pray for those left behind from those terrorist attacks of that day. Shall we pray? In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Ghost, amen. Almighty God, our refuge and our strength in the day of trouble, we turn to you for peace and for security as recall the attacks of nine eleven. Those attacks were against our nation, our way of life, and against you, our Creator and Sustainer. We thank you for the bravery and the sacrifice of those who saved lives. The police officers, firefighters, port authority workers, and rescue crews. The civilians who placed themselves in harm's way, as well as the passengers and crew aboard Flight ninety-three. Comfort and strengthen the family and friends of those who have died. Give healing and comfort to the survivors, the attacks who are living with continued physical, emotional, and spiritual distress. May those who survived feel gratitude and not guilt. Assure each person whose life changed forever of your protection and strength. May we learn to depend on the security you offer. We pray for your peace as we remember the terrorist attacks of nine eleven. As we hear of terrorist activity around the world today, quiet our fears. Heal the wounded of these attacks and help their family and friends rest in your bosom. Guide the choices of our world leaders and those who lead our community. Give them wisdom and discernment, not only as they work to resolve the lasting effects of nine eleven, but also as they try to alleviate security and safety concerns of all sorts. May their actions bring peace to all the people of the world. And now, gracious God, our world should change with the nine eleven attacks. We have seen how easily buildings can fall and how quickly lives can end. As we remember nine eleven, may it remind us that you are our only true security. Give us your strength to face the memory of this attack and the changes it made in all of our lives. Give us your compassion to help each other and recognize the needs of our own friends and neighbors, as well as those around the globe. And finally, oh God of mercy, grant us your peace, that peace that passes all understanding. It is in Christ Jesus' name that we pray these things, amen.
Amen. Will you please remain standing for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the real letter from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, may we see the. Mr. Secretary, will you please perform a roll call?
Tracy Burrow.
President.
Edward Huber here. Matthew De Nana.
Here.
Darryl Littlefield.
Here.
Julie Mundon.
Here.
Donna Rogers.
Here.
Matthew Shali. Absent. And then Richard Walz.
Here. Counselor Shali, we've been informed has COVID, so he will not be doing that, not feeling well at all. And of course, the other vacancy is for Counselor Wumpel, which will be a subject of part of the business of the evening. All right, let's get on to early business, so hopefully everyone got a chance to read the minutes. And if I could have two different motions, please.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve the August seventh, twenty twenty-three regular Borough Council meetings.
I'll second.
All right, I have motions by Counselors Littlefield and Mundon for approval of the August seventh regular session minutes. All the favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes Mike, and likewise the work session minutes.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve the minutes from the August twenty-first, twenty twenty-three Borough Council work session.
I'll second.
We have motions by Counselors Littlefield and Rogers for approval of the August twenty-first work session meeting minutes. All the favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Mr. Secretary, I only have one presentation, is there any correspondence for this evening?
We, we did receive a letter of resignation from Courtney Wumpel. Courtney Wumpel has relocated from the borough, as such, has resigned as a member of Satterborough Council.
Okay, thank you, sir, for counsel, we'll take an official motion on that to accept that resignation a little bit later. So if you have any questions or concerns, we can talk about that then.
Good evening, everyone, just have a few things to update you all on from last month. We had a wonderful time, a hot day, putting the Christmas, new Christmas tree together with Steve and some of his great men. We were there for a few hours, but we're glad we did that because they have figured out a system. And once it goes up in November, it's gonna really look great in the new spot up near Broad Street Theater at the old fountain at Unives. Our events committee also had a wonderful meeting with the Unives team, who is the main sponsor of the Christmas tree lighting. And we have some great ideas this year to utilize all that new space up there, that parking lot. We're gonna talk about closing the street in front and have more vendors, some food vendors and stuff there and activities for the kids, including twenty-four red and green pool noodles that are in the back of my car right now, that will be candy cans. So there, you know, we have a lot to looking forward to, I can't believe we're in September. Reminder, because we're in September, and this is the third Friday this week, it's gonna be a beautiful third Friday, so everyone should come out. We're going to have a lot for the kids this week, we're gonna have the fire department bring some trucks down, we're gonna have the chief's car there. We have an ambulance, so it's a lot of stuff for the kids to kind of explore in the lower parking lot and some big fat cookies that they can eat when they're done. So it should be another good one, and this is the second to last one, so I can't believe we're, you know, coming to a close on that. And our, our biggest thing that we are planning and that's coming up too is our economics development does have a set date for our next business bites, we're going to do a breakfast one this time because we have a consensus from some more business members from the community will come out for breakfast time, it's Wednesday, October fourth, and that will be from eight to nine thirty. And we'll be sending invites out and information out on our, on our Facebook page and everything to look forward to that. So we're going to discuss having commercial real estate ideas on how businesses can fill their empty spaces. So we're moving along, we're getting into the fall now, so we're gonna have a lot of fun things to do, so, thank you very much.
Thank you, and I take it for granted sometimes because we do have a few more visitors tonight, but Delica is, she is the manager of our Saturday program, which is kind of like a down, down Main Street. Thank you very much. As always, okay, there's no other quote presentations, so we'll move right on to administrative reports, Mr. Mayor.
I guess it's a busy month in September. Now wait, I lost my list, hold on a second. I have to do it this way or else I won't recover. So in addition to the third Friday event that Jess just mentioned, it's actually this weekend is really busy in Satterton. The fire company is having their sportsman's day on September sixteenth. They have a meat wheel, firearm, raffle, boot trucks, hunting and fishing gear, over fifteen thousand dollars worth of prize. So you can buy tickets the day of twenty-one years or older to play for certain prizes, an ID is required upon entry. Also, this weekend is the Sweatshirt of Hope Festival and the Recovery Walk, which happens technically in Hilltown Township, but I guess we'll take credit for it anyway. Right on the old high school site on County Line Road. There's also a pigeon show, that's exciting. Yeah, that's, well, that's the most entertaining event. Then on September twenty-fourth is the Beanbag Food Crawl to benefit hungry kids in our community, you can buy tickets to that in advance. September twenty-eighth is the Satterton Telford Rotary Club Benefit Auction, which partial proceeds of which go to benefit Satterton Park, which of course is the flagship Centennial Project of the Rotary Club, so anybody that would like to attend, I do have some extra tickets, but you have to promise to bid on stuff. And then it's fifth Friday at Generations, so the fifth Friday of every month, Generations opens in the evening to have live music and cocktails and snacks. You should check that out, and it's art jam, do you want to talk about that?
I mean, there's nothing much, I mean, we're planning, it's coming along, we're getting out with more vendors.
September thirtieth is the Art Jam out by the pool in the park. So it's a busy month, probably the busiest month, so hopefully we'll see all of those things in that fall.
Thanks, sir.
Chief. Good evening. So my monthly report as usual to the public, we had a total of six hundred and ninety-six calls for the month, ninety-five traffic stops, thirty-four tickets were issued, non-vehicle crashes with no injuries, which is always a good thing, eleven arrests, two hundred and twenty-four public service calls, twelve straight mental health calls, which is gonna be a new category we're adding, fifty-one assists, that's two other agencies, pardon me for saying that. We're a little over sixty-one hundred calls for the year, which is a twenty-eight percent increase over last year. And our new busiest times of the day are three forty and midnight, I like that it been a reflection for the end of the summer as well. We're at the same number of arrests this year we were last year, so there's been no change. We've had a twenty-six percent decrease in our major crimes, which is great, and an eighteen percent increase in our minor crimes. I have dealt with quite a few of those. As of the writing of this report, we had issued seventeen bus patrol violations for people going around buses. I issued three in one day last week, since the red lights are apparently still optional, not for people. So those are going now, we haven't had any today so far. As the mayor mentioned, we're hosting or attending at least fourteen events this month, so it's a very busy month for us as well. So we will be out there to further our community ordered policing efforts. One of those things is the Citizens Police Academy that we're running on the twentieth and twenty-first, we still have, we have nine tickets sold, they're not sold, they're free. We have nine spaces reserved out of twenty-five, and I realize the online process is a little cumbersome, so people just want to show up, that's fine, I have the flyers here. It's being held in this room, but we're gonna be facing that way. We are going to tour the police station, basically find out what your police department does and why, and get to play with some of the toys. You know, get to keep the handcuffs, they come back to me, but everybody is more than welcome to come. I have added a new category, as I said, our mental health calls, they are becoming our most prevalent call that we respond to. As of now, as of last week, all of our officers have been trained in a specialized course on dealing with people dealing with mental health crisis, so I'm very happy about that. So we are prepared for what we can and can't do. I'm still looking to fill a crossing guard position if anybody's interested. We're up to twelve new policies, that's what we're coming on really well with that. Our train is continuing, and we're waiting to hear on a grant that we put in for the beginning of the year, we still haven't gotten anything back yet. As some people have noticed, Satterton Hatfield Pike is now closed due to construction for three oh nine, I attended an online meeting and we're gonna be getting a lot more traffic through town, through Broad Street in Washington, so just so you know, it's coming. Supposedly it's gonna last about two to three years, depending on weather, so it's gonna get a little busier on here, so you might want to avoid that intersection. And Jessica, just to confirm, the cookies on Friday, are they for the public or for us? And I believe that's all I have, unless you say questions for me.
Questions for Chief Counsel.
Did Penn not notify us in advance of that road closure? I mean, we knew it was coming, but.
I, I can't say that I was not notified, so I don't know.
Can I ask that, really two to three years, kind of.
If you go by their PowerPoint of what they said for what they're doing and the steps they're taking, that's what they have projected until full completion. As far as us being affected, if I understood them properly, it's over the next year that we're gonna start seeing some new destruction.
I drove down it yesterday the right way and cars came at me. They went through the do not enter, and I thought I was going the wrong way, it was a little tricky. I had to pull over, pulled out, and people were still trying to come down, cones going around cones and everything. So I don't know if there's a way we can put it on the website or Facebook or whatever. A little jarring.
Department stood respond to a call today where someone had removed all those cones and stacked them up.
I've had a feeling like I could see people thinking.
Yeah, I believe that.
Julie, it's a good point, Mike, can maybe, maybe we'll add it as an ad hoc item on the work session to discuss for a few more minutes. Any other questions for Chief? Chief, twentieth and twenty-first, were those two individual sessions, it's not?
It's one academy over two nights, from six thirty to eight thirty.
Thank you. Then I have one comment, I did witness the buses on Front Street for the Charter School. Today, what I saw was working perfectly, I didn't see any other inconvenience, they were, they were backed up way to Swingley and then coming in one by one worked out really nicely. Okay, thanks, Chief. Mr. President, so.
Thank you, Mr. President, the court month, perhaps have your report before you, if you have any other questions.
Any questions for Bob? Thank you, sir. Mr. Cole.
Mr. President, everybody should have received a copy today, but I'll do some of the biggest, biggest items. One of the bigger numbers was municipal building, a lot that has the freight building power in every area for the freight building. During this, we'll say the last month, a little bit of this month, we established that parking lot out in front of the school and parking. It's nuts, it's just doomed and it's not based in, plus the curb, and it would have to get redone like before we got to paint there. Most of the curb, all the curb is in for the, the built-in stone curbing and all the parts of that was pointed today and about eighty percent of the sidewalk is in there. One area to do with one of the dumpster pads and where they gotta put some electric in. All the, all the ramps are in with the sidewalks, they're all completed, the main ramp coming down off the building is all completed. So it's getting, getting pretty close down there. Sanitary sewer, we talked about this, we wanted to try and get any of that sewer main out of Fifth Street. So we had enough time that we ran it all the way from Fifth Street up to a manhole mid-block, which was about two hundred and sixty feet. We did not do the lateral yet, we can come back and fill that in, but he's got a Fifth Street now, so for a while, we have fun this year, or totally make sure that to finish the paving on Fifth Street, the first page we did from Nobles from Montgomery was done in, actually, twenty-one, twenty-one. So. A storm, we talked about this too, we had that failing storm rain on the Second Street. We're about a hundred and ninety feet of plate we had to replace, and we put a new limit box in, we have one more to put across the street, trying to catch some of that water that comes down on Second Street before it gets to Reliance. Barksmoen, well, we stepped up a little bit there again. And over time, I can notice it's getting a little bit higher in the summer, we do have guys come in depending on how many rentals there are for the facility, and we've been having on average between Friday and Saturday, three, three rentals. We usually have someone coming in in the morning and someone's coming in between the two, because some of the rentals are pretty big and address some trash that's piled up and laying around there. Things are working all week, we're working on the pool right now, we do have a lower pool pretty much ready to be covered, now applied one barn. Statuary, we have some PKs heading up coming in near the end of, end of September, beginning of October, to do the, to finish the sewer main on Reliance and a few laterals that are left. And then we also have two minor issues going on down on West Broad Street. You know, and a permit with Penda, which I don't think we got back yet. So I'll have to see how it goes, eventually we might have to just make some repairs and permit catch up to us, so, we'll, we'll work on that. And again, we have some stuff, we can maybe finish up that part. In our, our summer help, we, we still have one part timer that's been like five hours a day, so.
Questions for Steve?
Peter, if they replace those laterals, hurry lines, can we pave wild this area?
We, we could, we could, that one, that sewer main is not a scene with the one more on Fifth Street, that's why we went there first to get that transit, make sure it was done settling, truly save the road. But we have a little bit of sewer main like three hundred feet, a little less than three hundred feet put on from Southern Street up towards the old tax buyer's house, and then we have, I think, five laterals still to go, so that, that could be done. When, when we come into Reliance, well, they won't leave overdone. That's not supposed to, it's probably used a week, I think, one or maybe a week and a couple days.
Mike, is wild on the fifth, the big fifth, that kind of thing so?
We also, the, 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 when you take Fifth Street, it looks like you guys are doing some suburb of Garfield out in there?
Yeah.
Beyond Fifth Street, is that part, is that considered, you're considering that part of the same job? Yeah, we started in the main hole on Fifth Street, and then we ran up Garfield towards School Lane.
You'll go all the way up that far?
We only have one lane left, we hit the manhole in the middle, that's where we stop. And then from that manhole to the alley, that's behind School Lane, we don't have to go all the way up to School Lane.
Gotcha.
We have the bigger section done, I think, just a little ladder.
Anything else, Counsel? Thanks, sir. All right, last but not least, the manager.
Start with the meeting schedule, tomorrow, Tuesday, September twelfth, will be a zoning hearing in this room. It's concerning variants applications for property at six fifty East Broad Street. The applicant is proposing a mixed use redevelopment of that site, it is several commercial. But several dimensional variances are required and consideration of a use variance as well. That'll be heard tomorrow evening. Our next work session is next Monday evening. And looking forward, our next Borough Council meeting will be on Monday, October, October second. Behind me is our secretarial staff, Danae, who has been with us for a while, is going to begin a new chapter in her life. She will be relocating out of the area next week. This will be her last four weeks. Joining her is Alice Sander.
Correct?
Alice has joined us last week, she's training under Danae, and she will be taking over Danae's role starting next week, so we wish Danae the best and we welcome Alice into our office. As far as the agenda for the seasonning is concerned, we have formal consideration of a plan of subdivision for Gerald Pecklack. He is in the audience, he has been before the Planning Commission, he is proposing a subdivision and some lot line, lot line changes for his properties on West Reliance Road and Harley'sville Pike. The result of the subdivision plan will be the creation of a separate single-family building lot on West Reliance Road. The Saturn Planning Commission has recommended approval conditioned upon final review of the record plan to make sure that all the Borough Engineer comments were properly addressed. And there is a request for a development agreement particularly concerning the deferral of street treaties on the new building lot, which will be required once construction of that lot begins. The second item, as I mentioned, we did receive a formal resignation from Borough Councilor Courtney Wumpel, who has resigned and moved out of state, actually. Borough Council did receive two letters of interest, and I, I think we're scheduled for next.
Stacy Crandall to assume that role effective October 2. Stacy would become the fourth Borough Manager in the history of Satterton Borough. And following that, the last item is approval of Borough Council with regard to the employment agreement of the Borough Manager. And it's on.
Counsel, any questions for Mike and exclude those you might have for the business of the evening because you'll have a chance to do inquiries when we make those motions. Okay, thank you, sir. Let's move on to committee reports. Are there any committee reports?
Finance's meeting this week.
What time is it?
Thirteen, five forty-five.
Matt Charlie who's not here is currently reviewing the burn ordinance. So there'll be more to follow. He's got a lot of data. Thanks for your input on that. Yeah, we're not going to rush into anything. We know the balance of modifying the burn ordinance is keeping in touch with the state law and the international code, so.
I can go. Public outreach. So for public outreach, we'll have a Borough Council table at the third Friday this Friday. And then on Saturday, we have our Borough Council office hours, which will be out here in the lobby from eleven to one.
And then one from Executive Committee. I promised you guys that I would have new committee assignments this month. However, I'm going to wait until October after we make the, we fill the vacancy. Hey, did you have something?
Our committees are reviewing full management for next year. And we are revising our fees for pavilion rental in the book. Because of the high.
We also meet with Rotary on Thursday for.
Right. Mr. Howser, did I see? No, you worked that day. You won't be able to make that. Okay, good. Anything else? All right, appreciate those updates. All right, we started on a somber note, but it's going to get increasingly more simple and rapport. Okay, let's consolidate the bill. So let's do one motion for the bills as well as the recurring, the recurring bills, please.
Mr. President, I made a motion to approve the bills for the month of August twenty twenty-three and approve to pay recurring bills for September twenty twenty-three.
Hold on a second.
Okay, I have most sentenced by Counselors Mundon and DeNana for both the approval of the regular bills for August as well as the recurring bills for September. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It might last a week, so unanimous so far. All right, what's always my favorite part of the evening is public comment. So if you are a borough resident, a property owner, or a business owner in the borough, I would love to hear from you. Please come up to the podium, state your name and address, and tell us what you'd like to share. Hello, Penny.
Hello, I'm Penny Price, East Broad Street, Satterton. I'm also the Borough Council's representative to the library. So it's mid-year. I thought it'd be a good time to update everybody on the library. First and foremost, thank you for your continued support. Our event in the park, the Dinner in White, was a fabulous success. The evening was wonderful and everybody had a good time. And adding to the activities in September, the library will be hosting a Truckapalooza on Saturday, the twenty-third. It's a family event with all different types of trucks available for kids and families to see. Last week, last month's Borough Council meeting, I think somebody said they really like numbers. So the library isn't just about words, it's also about numbers. So I thought I'd share some numbers. The library is going strong through twenty twenty-three through July. There've been over fifty-four thousand visits to the library, which is an average of over three hundred people a day coming into our library. Since the beginning of the year, over two hundred and twenty-two thousand items have been checked out. This is an eighteen percent increase over last year and eleven percent increase over pre-pandemic levels. So the library has really revved up and getting back to normal after the pandemic slowdown. In the first seven months of the year, the library has given seven hundred and ninety-four programs attended by over twelve thousand people. These rates are also up significantly as compared to last year. And while the number of programs is now greater than the pre-pandemic level, rates are still a little bit short of the twenty twenty-two pre-pandemic levels. During the summer, eight hundred and seventy-one children and teens participated in the Summer Learning Challenge, earning, among other things, tokens for the new book vending machine. And then a couple of things specific to the Borough of Satterton. Currently, there are five thousand and forty borough residents with a library card. This is well over half the population of the borough, so our borough members are strong supporters and users of the library. Based on Satterton's current funding rates, Satterton residents pay about a dollar per month to support the library for about three cents a day. So minimal payment for great reward. The library is thankful to Satterton's continued support of our library. Municipality funding is core to the library's operating budget, and together we make our library a great resource for everyone in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Penny. For those of you that don't know, Counsel went for a tour at some point, it was probably a year ago, I'm thinking now, or earlier this year, I can't remember a minute of time warp. But I like to listen to audiobooks, and there's an app called Libby. So if you're a library cardholder, you can link that app and then e-read or download the audiobooks for listening. That's great. And there's some other many benefits, like library passes, some great museums in the area and in the city, so take advantage of it. Thank you. Anyone else? Let me shine. Except for you.
Hey, Dan. Do I look shy?
No.
Daniel Howser, Fourth and Sixth Central Avenue. On behalf of Council Sundays in the Park, I just want to thank Counsel, the works crew, our manager, Police Department, for all the behind-the-scenes stuff that you've done for us. First of all, letting us have the park and use the park, so on and so forth. Before COVID hit, we were averaging easily approximately three thousand a concert. People come and watching, and then once COVID hit, all our numbers dropped. This year, we saw a major increase of parents and families coming out to our concerts. We definitely are seeing some numbers going back up to where they were before COVID. And we think that it's going to start skyrocketing like it was before that. We had a couple, approximately forty-five hundred people at our last concert. We had a couple of three thousand, a couple other concerts. Once in a while, we have to go inside. Once again, that's booked up as well, inside Indian Crest, which only holds eight hundred or a thousand, but it's pretty much booked up. So it's thanks for everyone that comes out. So we just wanted to say thank you. We have some things that we're going to be working on in the future to not to stay stagnant, but to take it to the next level. We would like to bring up our sound to a better sound system. So we'll be working with that, and that's also with the Park Project as well. And we are trying, and please hear the word try. All right, I'm going to be working on this, and it's going to be a big task, but we're going to try. Try to get some LED screens to come in, and then we can make it even with a camera or two, even even make it better. So we have close-ups, so when people are talking, or someone's on a keyboard or something, you can see what they're doing, so on and so forth. So that's what I want to be working on this year to just make this a whole better place to be for a free concert for ten weeks. So and then the last thing I want to say, and maybe it's a little personal to me because I'm involved with a couple committees, but it's an awesome sight when you stand in the middle of our park, hear great music, see kids running around, and also you do a panoramic view, and you see the play area of kids playing. Parents are somewhat there watching them, but yet watching the concert. And there's food being cooked and the whole thing, and then all of a sudden, you kind of look over top of that, you see a couple of people still working out in the fitness area. So and our whole field is being used one way or another, and it's not, it's not done yet because there's other things going to be put towards the back here, or back here, and so on and so forth. So our town is really growing. People are coming to see us. So thank everyone that's come to support us. Thank you guys for giving us the freedom to go where we're going. So that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. And anyone else? Okay, public comments are now closed, and we'll move on to the business of the evening. There's plenty of time for dialogue just after the motion. So let's go to item A, please. Mr. Vice President, motion for the Pecklet subdivision plan.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the plan of subdivision for Gerald Pecklet, Westford Lions Road and Harney'sville Pike, as prepared by Renew Engineers, last revised August twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, along with the waiver and the thorough request by letter dated March thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, and last revised August twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, conditioned upon satisfaction of the review comments that the Borough Engineer and execution of the developer's agreement as prepared by the borough solicitor.
I'll second.
Thank you. I have motions by Counselors Huber and DeNana for approval of the subdivision plan. Are there any questions, comments, concerns? You have an extensive package and like Ed said, there's, you know, there were some revisions, but primarily we're talking about the waiver of the minimum right of way width for the development along the streets. And then the referral request, so they were already reviewed by the engineer. Mr. Pecklet, or your attorney, would you like to make a summary comment at all? You don't have to. We're prepared to clerk right this second.
All right, well, just, I'll take a minute and just say thanks for allowing me the opportunity to to clean things up with my parking lot and the lot lines in between and create a new lot. So I'm going to make sure it's a nice, nice new house going in there. I've got potential buyer lines up. It's going to be really decent and nice though, so appreciate the opportunity and thanks for working with me on that.
Sure, we know it'll look great. I mean, you have a whole lineage right there in the area. Okay, then I have the motions by Counselors Huber and DeNana. I will formally read this for as prepared by Review Engineers, last revised August twenty-first, along with the waiver and deferral request by letter dated March thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, and last revised August twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, conditioned upon satisfaction of the review comments by the Borough Engineer and execution of the developer's agreement as prepared by the Borough Solicitor. If there are no additional comments, all in favor of that motion, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, there you go. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, item A B. So we literally just received the resignation by Courtney, and she had a quite lengthy letter, which I will read right now. Borough Council Mayor Yocum and Borough Manager, please accept this letter as formal release of my resignation from Satterton Borough Council effective immediately. I moved out of the state and I no longer reside in Satterton Borough. If you need anything else, please do not hesitate to contact me. On a serious note, as you will know, Courtney was a fantastic contributor on the council. But if I had to describe her in one word, it would be hectic. She's a busy mother of four little ones. You know, and you moms out there know what it's like raising new kids and running your own business. Led a very busy life and then volunteered a lot of her spare time here. We would have liked to see her a bit more, but what she, the contributions she did make are undeniable. And I was just sitting here thinking, for two that stand out would be her collaboration with Ed on the Parks Committee. Particularly, we went through a rough couple of years with poll operations, and Ed and Courtney stepped in to really make poll function more smoothly this year in collaboration with our own manager as well as Bennetton's Poll Management, the Poll Management Company. So that was terrific. Plus, she was a frequent flyer over there to be able to give another level of oversight. The other one, she partnered with Counsel Littlefield here in the economic development of freight building. And she specifically worked extensively with our solicitor to get that sublease in place. So coming in the very near future, because of those efforts, we'll have brass collar opening up as soon as, you know, the work's done and they can get their fermenters and brewing vessels in place. Yeah, so we'll definitely miss her. For those of you that don't know, she and her husband are very adventurous, and they moved out to Wyoming. We'll miss her, and if you're watching, it's Courtney, we love you. And now I would like a motion to accept her resignation, please.
Mr. President.
Oh, no, they don't go once now. I'll get back with the Wolfson.
Mr. President, I'd like to accept the resignation of Borough Councilor Courtney Wampole due to her relocation from the Borough of Satterton.
And I'll say. Thank you. Okay, I have motions by Counselors Paul Zach and Littlefield to accept the resignation of Counselor Courtney Wampole due to her relocation. Who are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Like we said, we'll interview the candidates for that open position next week. All right. Come on, please. All right. Mr. Mayor, before we do, please, see, I'd like to make a few comments.
Yep, as always, I have written mine in the fan. So just a few comments on, as Mike called it, a historic moment. A few years ago, when Mike announced his intent to retire as Borough Manager, we were all a bit shocked and worried. I think then Counsel President Brian Goshow's exact words were, "I feel like my dog just died." Mike has been our Borough Manager for an astonishing forty years, an unprecedented tenure, especially considering at any one time you can have ten unruly people up here to answer to, plus the public. Mike knows everything there is to know about Satterton Borough, and most people do not remember Satterton without Mike getting the help. He's also been a personal mentor of mine for a long time. The thought of replacing him was overwhelming. We didn't even have a job description since we hadn't needed one in four decades. But how lucky we were. Little did we know that an exceptionally qualified candidate was already eyeing up the job. She had been seeing the progress in Satterton and was quietly watching our meetings and reading our minutes. And as the interview process went on, it became fundamentally clear that we had a perfect candidate for Satterton Borough Manager in Stacy Crandall. Daisy comes to Satterton with a wealth of knowledge in municipal government, which she will tell you about shortly, a wide breadth of experience, a huge local network in the field, and an energy and excitement to keep Satterton Borough moving forward. And we could not be more thrilled to welcome Stacy on board. With this Borough Council, we are very excited to see where she can take Satterton next. Stacy, as she heard, gets sworn in tonight and starts in her new role as Borough Manager in early October. But this is not a retirement party for Mike quite yet. He has generously agreed to stay on for a few months to help aid in the transition and pass on his forty-plus years of Satterton know-how. Stacy and Mike, along with our staff, some of which are here tonight, our volunteers and our elected officials will be a dynamic team to help keep Satterton moving forward. So Stacy, we are so incredibly excited to extend to you tonight our official welcome board.
Madam President, pro tempore. And Counselor Mundon.
Yes.
May I have a motion, please?
Okay. Mr. President, I make a motion to appoint Stacy E. Crandall to serve as Borough Manager slash Secretary of the Borough of Satterton effective October second, twenty twenty-three. Hold on a second.
Okay, I have motion by Counselors Mundon and Rogers for the appointment of Stacy, and we'll vote on that momentarily. Now, Stacy, I would like to invite you to the podium to introduce yourself to everyone.
Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you so much. This has been an incredible experience. Just the whole interview process was very well done. And I'm just really proud to be a part of this community. It's a wonderful community. There's a lot of revitalization, a lot of pride in the community, and I'm really excited to be a part of it. I've been in municipal government for almost twenty years, and I'm looking forward to joining the team here. I want to thank the council and the mayor for welcoming me already to the team. And I also want to extend some to Mike, who has really been very welcoming to me, and I can't wait to work with you. And I have big shoes to fill, so I'm looking forward to learning all I can and be a sponge and get the forty years I can get of knowledge from him. And so I'm really, really proud and I'm very thankful and honored that you, you know, it's a very big decision for any elected official to make is to have a new manager. So I'm very thankful and appreciative for the honor, and I also want to just say a quick thank you. All of the people in this back row are from, my mom's here, and the team from Doylestown Township came to support me tonight. So I just want to say thank you to all of them for coming out tonight as well.
And I forgot to tell you guys, when we adjourn tonight, please don't run off. We have plenty of time. We have some refreshments. And the mayor has even brought champagne, so. So please stick around. Don't rush right out after we adjourn. So thank you, Stacy.
Thank you.
I would, you could sit down for a couple of minutes. Julie, why don't you tell us how we got here?
So I am Julie Mundon. I was the Chair of the Search Committee for the Borough Manager. We met almost a year ago to start the process. And at Mike's request, we went through the Manor Center at Lafayette College because we knew very well that none of us would be able to do this job to find a Borough Manager. We don't have experience. So it was myself, Matt De Nina, Tracy, and Don Rogers. I initiated a call in November twenty twenty-two. We signed on in January twenty-three. We worked with Nicole, Nicole Beckett at the Manor Center of Lafayette College, very, very experienced, very long process, very meticulous. We had lots of meetings. And then in July, we started the process. And we, I didn't believe it was going to happen. I really thought it was going to take forever, but it was very measured. We had fifteen applicants. We got it down to eight. We interviewed every single one of those eight in person over two days. And we just came up with one candidate that just rose and just showed right to the top. And it was sort of a no-brainer, but we had to go through the process because this is the process. And we can't be more thankful. One, that you're here. Two, that Mike agreed to stay and help mentor. It's a situation that doesn't happen. We are apparently now, you know, a brainchild for them. They want to go with our model because they couldn't get over how wonderful the process was, meaning that we all worked together really well, and we were all on the same page. So that's it from the search committee, and we're happy, very happy for you.
What if any other counselors like to comment?
I just think the process was so well-formed and to start with fifteen and end up with the perfect, it's truly amazing. We welcome you.
And I'd like to thank Julie for her leadership. I mean, when we started planning for this a year ago, we actually kicked off, you guys would have heard me say it repeatedly, certainly over the last year and a half, that we felt that this particular council that was organized in January almost two years ago, we felt this was our number-one assignment. And we knew, we, you know, we love Mike. We can't say enough good about Mike. But we will have an opportunity. We will celebrate Mike. Mike and I spoke on Friday, and much to his chagrin, we will, we will send Mike out with a bang when that time comes. But I'm very thankful for all of council because a lot of times, some of you come to our work sessions and see some of the, some of the very important things we deal with sometimes, and also some of the petty things. But we kept reminding ourselves and, you know, Julie and I could recite, right? What is the number-one thing that this Borough Council and mayor have to do? Yes, the replacement of our Borough Manager. So kudos to the entire team. Pause one more moment in case any council wants to make any comments.
The process was, it couldn't have gone any better. It really, really was great to work with you all, and it was a wonderful, wonderful process.
All right, then, without further ado, with motion by Counselor Mundon and Rogers for the appointment of Stacy E. Crandall to serve as the Borough Manager slash Secretary of the Borough of Satterton effective October second, twenty twenty-three. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Yeah, let's get an agreement, please. So quickly, one last business item, please, for the, for the agreement, employment agreement.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve the execution of an employment agreement with Borough Manager Stacy E. Crandall, following the terms and conditions set forth in the Conditional Offer of Employment dated July twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three by the Manor Center.
I'll second.
Yeah, motions by Counselors Mundon and DeNana for the approval of the execution of the employment agreement with Borough Manager Stacy and the following the terms and conditions set forth in the Conditional Offer of Employment dated July twenty-second, twenty twenty-three by the Manor Center. And one comment before we vote, unless there are any questions. That was conditional. We did a very, very extensive drug test. We really tested the drugs. But we did a background. Had to get a good. But a very expensive background by an amazing professional that gave us every detail in life. And I want to remind counsel, you have a lot of information in your packet that's highly confidential. So please, please don't disseminate any of that. So are there any questions or comments before I take a vote? All right, then, without further ado, that, all in favor of approval of the Solicitor formulating that agreement from additional to permanent and putting that into Pennsylvania Borough speak. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? So there are all your motions for this evening, and Mayor, I turned it over to you. We allow, Stacy, we please come through and cross, see if anyone's hands. All right, may I have a motion for adjournment?
Mr. President, motion to adjourn me.
All right, without objection, please join us for a second.